I call the Monday, August 15th, meeting of the Manona City Council to order with the Clerk, please call a roll.
Alder Wood?
Here.
Alder Rodmacher?
Here.
Alder DePula is excused. Alder Homquist?
Here.
Alder Moore?
Here.
And acting Mayor Thomas?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes or mark as first?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additions, corrections, modifications?
You know, Kathy, I did have something, and I'm just, let's see. I wanted to point out that on page five, under the update slash discussion on sustainability, I know Alder Moore is capable of representing herself, but I believe the intent of her comment was not so much all that she had learned, but rather that everyone is invited to share when it is this point of the meeting. And I think that's the whole point of having it as a standing item on the agenda, to demonstrate our city's commitment to this.
Right, just to clarify that, that it was both, I mean, it was committees, we were strongly encouraging staff to put it in their reports and to report out when they have the opportunity, and for committees to report out when they've done something too, because we're doing a lot of good things that are going under the radar. And the whole point of putting it on, just like with the DEIB, was to hopefully bring more light to what we're doing. That was my point.
Okay. Any other changes, modifications? If not, all those in favor say aye. Sorry.
I'm sorry, just kind of right below that, it says Chris Keith Chaney reported that nation night out, which should be national night out, same thing in the next line.
Yeah.
That's all.
Any other modifications or changes? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Minutes are approved. Appearances, we have a presentation on the financial audit by Zoom.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you. Okay, excellent. So thanks for allowing me to jump on on Zoom. My name is Amber Jereski with CLA, Clifton, Marston, Allen, the city's financial auditors. Mark, can you just clarify, did everybody receive the PDF copy that I'd sent out?
I just sent it out just recently, so I don't know if everybody's received it or not.
Okay. Well, if you're following along, you can scan through it. Otherwise, if you have any questions, Mark has my contact information, feel free to reach out. I'd be happy to go through anything after or another time. So if you are following along, I'm going to start on page number one, the independent auditor's report. The report, it starts with your opinion on the top, little different format from prior years. So we've audited the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund and the remaining aggregate fund information of the city of Manona as of and for the year ended December 31st, 2021. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the governmental activities, business-type activities, the major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city. That's a clean, unmodified opinion, the best opinion we can provide from an audit standpoint. Talks about the basis for our opinions. It's a test-based, risk-based approach. We do not look at all of the transactions of the city during the course of the audit. Responsibilities of management is at the bottom of that. Management is responsible, excuse me, for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. Our responsibilities as auditors is to issue an opinion in accordance with the standards, and that is on page two. Then I'm going to go to page 16. Page 16 starts your fund financials. I'm going to talk primarily about the general fund. Your general fund had about 2.9 million in cash as of December 31st, 2021. We like to look at what is the unassigned fund balance of the fund, and at December 31st, 2021, the general fund had 1.4 million. Or we like to compare that to what percentage of expenditures is that? And that's approximately 22% of your general fund expenditures. Our recommendation is always to be between 15% and 25%, depending upon your cash flow with state aids, property taxes, and so forth. So right in line with the expectations, obviously, we always recommend to continue to monitor that during your budget process and throughout the year. There's a full budget to actual summary level on page 20, and there's a more detailed budget to actual for the general fund in the back pages of the financial statements as well. There was a budgeted, I believe the budgeted deficit for 2021 was about 200,000, and it came in about, or 250, excuse me, it came in about 400,000. And some of that is just tightening in, maybe some additional vacancies, filling of positions and so forth. Most of that was in the general government line. Your general debt service fund had a fund balance of about 369,000, and the general capital projects about 386,000 as of December 31st, 2021. Your other governmental activities and funds, most of that is restricted. That relates to the city's tax incremental districts, so approximately 3 million, and some other certain special revenue funds that are donations and so forth. And those are all at the back of the financials, but there's a number of those funds, so I'll let you look at those on your own time, and if you have specific questions, feel free to reach out. Then I'm going to go to the utilities, the city's enterprise funds, the water utility, sewer, stormwater, and the transit. And this is on page 21. The city's water utility had net position of about 11.1 million. 9.2 of that was the net investment in capital assets, so all your capital infrastructure and mains, hydrants, meters, all of those types of items. Your sewer utility, net position 4.3 million approximately, about 3 million of that is the net investment in capital assets. The stormwater utility, net position of about 4.6 million, 3.9 of that being the net investment in capital assets. Typically, that's very common for those funds to be very capital-driven, that's the purpose, provide a service. So the unrestricted is usually what we look at, just like the unassigned fund balance in the general fund. We like to look at what the unrestricted, so in the water, about 970,000, sewer, about 712,000, and the stormwater, about 683,000. Those are, there's not a percentage that kind of gets tied to that. Instead, we like to look at cash flows. So on page 23, we like to monitor, is your cash flows from operating activities, is that covering your capital asset additions and your debt principal and interest payments? So the water utility generated just shy of 1.3 million in cash flow from operations, and the total net change in cash for the year was a surplus of about 500,000. So there was acquisition of capital assets of about 1.2 million, some proceeds on debt that covered those, and then your principal and interest. So the water utility had a healthy year, but there was a rate increase, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, I believe it was July or June of 2021, that went into effect for the water. The sewer generated cash flows of about 100,000, and the total change in cash and cash equivalents was a deficit of 187,000, most of that being 126,000 in capital infrastructure, offset by some debt proceeds, but some additional principal paid that kind of offset that. Again, the sewer utility, the rates can be set by the city council at any point in time, compared to the water utility, that has to go through the Public Service Commission process. The stormwater utility generated about 415,000 in cash flow from operations, the total change in cash and cash equivalents about 306,000 of a deficit, and again, a large portion of that is some additional acquisition of capital assets over the debt proceeds that were issued. Any questions on the utility or the general fund that I just mentioned?
Does anybody have any questions? We can't, because this is appearance, we can't discuss or debate it, but we can certainly ask questions of the auditor, so.
No.
And if there's no questions, then I have just a couple other items. On page 97, as part of the audit, we review the city's internal controls. We don't issue an opinion on those controls, but we would be required to disclose any findings or noncompliance that we noted. And on page 97 and 98, we do not have any findings that we noted, and there was no noncompliance. There is verbal recommendations that we make throughout the audit process, and those do not get reported here. But those are suggestions such as, you know, adding a sign-off from a review perspective or things along those lines. So nothing to disclose that we are required to from a material weakness or significant deficiency perspective, and no noncompliance that we noted during our testing. The other item, you don't have this document yet, this will come out with the final printed copy, but the governance communication, just a few things that we're required to disclose here, no disagreements with management, and no disagreements noted. So Mark, his staff, the city staff, great to work with and very helpful, so. Any questions at all?
Any questions? No questions.
Excellent. Again, if anything comes up, Mark does have my contact information, feel free to reach out.
We thank you for the information. Thank you. Have a good night. Good night. Are there any other public appearances? Not, we'll close the appearance section. There is no public hearing, there is no consent agenda, item G, council action items, no unfinished business, new business. The first item, consideration of premise extension application for 2022, 2023 for Leskey's Inc., DBA, Tully's Food and Spirits, 6401, Manona Drive License Review. This is start for immediate action. Is there a motion to move it up?
Move to suspend the rules and take this out of order.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Is there a motion for approval?
Move, approval.
Second.
Is there, oh, I have a question. Now I may ask? Okay.
You've got a second, right?
Yes.
Yep, okay. Thank you. I guess it's more of a curiosity, on page six, can someone just explain to me, I know this is just one of those little things that I need to learn, but why is the same person listed under all officers, directors of corporation and members? Sheri Leah Hayes is listed three times. I'm assuming the dates of birth could be different, these could be three separate people?
No, it's the husband and wife, so it looks like Craig has two of the positions, Sheri has three.
Okay, so they have to list for each, for example, one time she may be a director, one time she may be a manager.
Right.
She's all three.
What's that?
She's all three.
So she's listed three times. Okay. That's enough.
Did you want to explain this?
Yeah, so this is basically, we already approved their outdoor patio, and we neglected to extend the premises at that time, so this is really kind of just crossing the Ts and dotting the Is kind of thing.
Got it. Are there any questions? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Excuse me, will we move to item B, convening closed session under Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85, where in one, where in E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. You're T agreement for Lagoon de Nord Bridge. Is there a motion to go in closed session? So moved. Put the Clerk, please call a roll.
Alder Rodmacher?
Aye.
Alder Homquist?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
We are in closed session. Action, consideration of Resolution 22-8-2285, a resolution to enter into agreement with the State of Wisconsin Department of Transportation for improvement of Lagoon de Nord Bridge, Public Works Director. Is there a motion to take this out of order?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion for approval?
Move, approval.
Is there a second?
Aye. I'll second.
Discussion?
Debrief, I don't think we explained why we went into closed session and open session, so.
Dan, I asked him the question.
I think it was only in closed session, though.
Okay.
Do we want to describe it?
I mean, the reason is because the federal, we're getting federal aid for it, so we have to follow the federal and state rules on confidentiality before the bidding.
Further discussion? This is a roll call vote?
Yes.
Alder Homquist?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Rodmacher?
Aye.
Motion passes. We move to item eight, reports of committees, commissions, boards, mayor, everybody. First, updates on discussion of diversity, equity, and inclusion, DEI efforts. Does anybody have anything to report on this item? If not, we will move to item two, update discussion on sustainability efforts. Does anybody have anything to report on sustainability efforts?
I'll save that for the committee reports.
Nothing on sustainability reports. Well, committee reports, Alderman Rodmacher.
I asked for that, didn't I? So three committees, Sustainability, Landmark, and Community Media. I'll start with Sustainability. We had no meeting in August. If you'll see in the packet, we've appointed a new member, which is very exciting, and I don't believe we yet have a new staff person, correct?
Correct. They're doing interviews this week, so.
Which is really promising. At the September meeting, we hope to have that person on board, and the mayor will be joining us just to have a little conversation with the members who have been raising questions about the true charge of the committee and what they, we just want to focus on what we should be focusing on, put it that way. For Community Media, we've got some fantastic progress. I think I brought up last time that the newsletter is looking beautiful. We've kind of gone through all the things that Will has wanted to take on over the years, but just has been short-staffed on, lined them up, put some deadlines on them, assigned them out to people to sort of take the lead on. And in the audience, we've got one of our community media members who has volunteered to take on the task of writing public service announcements. He, as well as the two members who are taking on the newsletter, I just want to give a heads up to the, my fellow Alders, in that if there's any committee that you chair, I think you can expect to see these folks visiting your meetings at least once, just to introduce themselves, and to ask for your contributions for the newsletter and for PSAs. And hopefully that'll be happening at some soon-to-be upcoming meetings. As far as the landmarks committee goes, Doug presented just a beautiful brochure that should be finishing up pretty soon, that lists all the current and the lost Manona landmarks. It also includes some state landmarks. And then one highlight from that committee, I would say, is that we've been working with the Frostwoods Neighborhood Historic District to do some outreach in that community and perhaps hold an event where citizens can learn the benefits of historic landmark designation. And I guess I'll leave it at that. We don't have the details as far as the date time of that handout yet, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Alder Wood?
Let's see, the NPO met a couple weeks ago, and among other things, approved funding for the reconstruction of Nichols Road from, I think, the entire length from Manona Drive to Winnicott Road. 60% funding on that. Scheduled construction is 20, Dan left, 24 or 25, I think.
24.
That's it.
Thank you. Alder Moore?
Yeah, on the transit commission front, the transit folks met, I think it was last week, regarding, again, discussing a proposal that we've been considering, teaming up with Madison Metro to advance public transit here in Manona, and we decided on three open houses, one of which will be at the senior center, and the other two, most likely here at the library, to share all the information we have with Madison Metro, representatives here as well, to talk about what those changes would look like, and from soup to nuts, if you will, in terms of what the changes would be, how much it would cost, kind of a comparison of what we've got now versus what we would do if we move in that direction. So I would just encourage our community to look out for those dates, those specific dates and times, and for information on that proposal. Plan Commission is meeting on Monday night, and among other things on the agenda, we'll be visiting, again, having prehearings and hearings on a proposal known as the Bloom Project, which is at the corner of Dean and the northwest corner of Dean and Manona Drive. And I know we had quite a bit of community interest in that project, so, you know, again, it's not any, there's no final decisions on, I mean, we're not on the project, but we will be discussing it again, and as I said, having hearings and prehearings, so it's a great time to tap in.
Nancy, did you have a question?
I just, Nancy, is it called the Bloom? Why is it called the Bloom Project again, just because of the developer?
They decided that they wanted to call the building the Bloom.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's actually, the Neutral Project is the name of the developer.
Okay.
And it's called, the Bloom is the name of the building, as is currently.
Senior Commissioner met, and we agreed to have little requests about the upcoming years. Yeah, upcoming year was one. And then Public Works met, and we reviewed the item that we voted on tonight regarding the bridge and shared costs regarding the funding, and then capital equipment. That's it.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, thank you, everyone, for helping pitch, and helping to attend, and helping to donate, and share the love at National Night Out this year. It was definitely a team that on display, and I want to thank you all and members of the public for showing up, and particularly for donating to Winnicott Schools Back to School Drive, so we did really well. On that note, Bear School Drive, their official school drive is on the 30th of this month that they're having, I believe it starts at 4:00, might be a little later, I don't know, but we'll be sure to help pitch for that as well. So thank you, it was a well-tended event, and I think it, as it has done in previous years, I think it flowed well with the concert in the park as well. So we hope to build on that in the future years. Regards to sustainability, we have a brand-new hybrid squad that is in patrol now, so hopefully we won't be consuming as much carbon, as much gas, and emitting as much waste to help preserve our wonderful world. We hope to continue to build on that in the years to come. I often get questions, rightfully so, about seeing squad cars that are running. Hopefully, as we transition to more hybrid vehicles and overall electric vehicles, you'll stop seeing that. But why we, why you might see the engine running in the squads, particularly in a hybrid vehicle, is just how that technology works. It relies on gas combustion and the electric power. And so when it demands, you know, more power, or it senses that the battery is running lower, then it starts the combustion, the engine. But why we keep it running is because of all the equipment inside that requires constant power to that equipment. So as much as I wish we can come up with a system and method that will shut everything down, preserve things as they need to be ready to go when the officers hit the squad car, the technology has not caught up yet, but hopefully will be there soon, where we can actually shut things down when we're not using them. That is not the case. But I've received some really good inquiries from members of the public about that, so I just wanted to share. We're hiring, our deadline for application ends later this week. We don't have any vacancies as of yet, but we are anticipating the potential vacancies for some retirement-eligible officers who've spent a lot of good hard work and time here at Manona, who are ending, soon to be ending their careers here. So we are anticipating the potential of that, and so we're creating an eligibility list in the event these wonderful officers decide to happily retire, happily and help retire. So we have a lot of good interested candidates, as we're seeing nationwide for years and years and years, that the volume of candidates are going down. We're hoping to change that trend, but I can report to you that I think this is probably, I've only been here for a little over a year, but it's probably one of the most diverse candidate pools we've seen, and a lot of you are to thank for that, again, having to do with giving the option for those who don't have the Law Enforcement Academy certification that we will sponsor them as a city. We hire character, we will train you how to do this job. So we're going to continue to develop that, and hopefully we'll have a more diverse and qualified workforce to join our ranks. And then lastly, I'm overdue for a video on social media, I got to do one here soon, but we have to start stopping at stop signs and slowing down in our community. Winnicott, the construction in Winnicott is creating a lot of stress and challenges for folks, I understand that. Following a detour may not be as simple to some as it is for others, and it creates added stress, I understand that. For those who are traveling their normal loops around the lake, please keep in mind that that detour applies to you too. Many of you, my office, I know the mayor's office, I believe, has received some, I'll call them nasty grams, about the police rule enforcement for all persons, bicyclists and motorists who are in violation of the road closure. We'll continue to do that, but we need your help. My message word signs, I've better help there, the officers that are signing themselves every day to direct a patrol. We're not going to be able to take our way out of this, so I'm again pleading for voluntary compliance. Just this morning, I heard reports about the construction crews actively working with backhoes and utilizing dangerous equipment, having to stop what they're doing because a cyclist is going through the active construction zone. So my officers know to be sure to lend those wonderful people a hand, and to enforce the road closure as much as we can. So again, I'm just asking for the community's help in complying. So, again, I'm just asking for the community's help in complying with the road closure. It'll be over soon, quote-unquote, so we'll just have to get through it together.
It's almost like a challenge for some people to try and get through the road closure.
Mm-hmm. It's a game.
You know, it's, you put up gates, you put up signs, you even, I mean, I was sitting on the bridge today, not too far from a message board that read, "You must stop," and all capital letters, had a stop sign, and of course, even with me, I understand I'm in an unmarked police car, but most people recognize a police car, even if it's unmarked. Even with me sitting there, there was some challenges in the binding by that sign and the stop sign, which is universal, if not in this country, almost around the world. So, here I am, pleading, asking members of the public to please try to provide. And then it's a challenge for those of you who live on that stretch of construction as well, I understand that, so I appreciate the patience.
Actually, they're very good about maintaining accessibility for the people who live there.
That's good. No, that's good.
Yeah, the construction, not the, not the, not the drivers who go through, but the construction crew is very, very, if you're trying to back out and they're working, they will direct you, and they will, I mean, they'll help you get in and out of your driveway if they're working there, so.
Yeah.
They're very good.
That's, that's good, Alder, it's directing there, it's good to hear that. And then lastly, I think it's appropriate for me, as police chief, to just talk about sort of the climate that we live in today, some of the challenges that we all see and experience, and recently, some of the rhetoric that has intensified against law enforcement, particularly our federal counterparts that we work with often, is quite concerning. And so, I'll just pitch for those women and men who are working hard every day and risk their lives for you all, for me, and for the people of this country. You know, I'm a patriot, I don't normally come across as, you know, singing every patriotic song that this nation has, but I am, and I just want to recognize that we are ethical people who sign up to do this job, and we're in it for the right reasons. And are there bad apples that we need to weed out, as there isn't any profession? But I'll hold mine, as I work, to try to weed out the bad apples. Sure, there are. But the vast majority, the vast majority of law enforcement officials are in it for the right reason, are hearts in for the right reason, and they're out to do good every day, with no guarantee that they're going to come home to their families. So, I know I've said that from time to time, but anytime I turn on the news and I see something regarding something that somebody said, and how that impacts a lot of people, some unstable, to react, I feel I'm obligated to say something. So, with that, I'm here for questions, and then I'll send that.
Any questions of the chief?
Thank you for the statement.
Kathy, I don't have a question, but I just, as a follow-up to what you were saying about the construction, a social media site that we're all familiar with today, there was someone that posted, was complaining because he had gotten, it wasn't here in Menona, but it was in Madison, and he was complaining that he had gotten a ticket for going past a road closed, no through traffic. I mean, the sign couldn't have been clearer. And he was expressing anger that he'd gotten his ticket, and I would say 75% of the people actually were getting, were jumping on his bandwagon and getting into a discussion of, does road closure and no through traffic, and what does it mean, and does it really mean that? And, well, you know, they weren't working on the road at the time, and it was, the gravel was perfectly okay to drive on, and, I mean, it was just like, and I was astounded because I thought, oh my God, maybe we need to have, people need to go through their driver's license exams more frequently, you know? I mean, honestly, it was like 75% of the responses to him were, were just, so, it's just to say, I'm very appreciative of having read a little bit of that today, how challenging it is, because if that's people's, you know, mindset, it's, that's really, really hard. Like I said, it couldn't be any clearer.
I also have a question, but just more of a comment, just as I'm listening to the chief talk, I know, Dave, you're probably scribbling as well, but so many, I mean, six things you mentioned are worthy of sharing with our community, right? Through PSAs, through the newsletter. I listen to WVMO all the time, it's, you know, the PSAs are almost the glue that holds it all together with a couple songs in there, you know? It's just such a wonderful information source. I mean, we have a new hybrid car, we, why we idle police cars? That's interesting for people to know, you know, that we're hiring, that people need to stop at stop sign. I mean, and it goes on and on, so just thank you for sharing those points, and I think people want to know that stuff, and I'm really happy to be part of this committee, so.
Any other questions, your comment?
Thank you.
I have some money for you. Does the clerk have anything to report?
No report.
The administrative, the, the interadministrator?
No report.
Anybody else have anything to add? If not?
Kathy, I was just actually going to say, I forgot to mention, I want to extend on behalf of everyone in the city of Menona and beyond, I just want to extend my gratitude to the Department of Parks and Rec, and to the friends of San Damiano for, once again, hosting an extraordinary beer garden on San Damiano on Thursday night. We had, again, over 1,000, we're estimating over 1,000 people, and it was a beautiful night, and the, you know, and I, as someone who was doing tours of the house all night, one of the first questions I asked was, how many people are from Menona? And people would stick up their hands, and other people were, and then I'd say, how many people east side? And they'd stick up their hands, and then, you know, some people were like, we're from out of town. So, it was just really great to see such a cross-sexual of people, and really, you know, infant to 95 years old, and largely coming by bike. Like, the number of bikes on the, on the site was just extraordinary, which is fantastic, absolutely fantastic. So thanks, again, to Parks and Rec and friends of San Damiano for, for hosting that event. Next one is September 24th.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to add? If not, a motion to adjourn is in order.
We have an appointment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, I'll add in, so we have an upcoming appointment for our committee.
Thank you.
And regarding some of my previous comment regarding appointments, I provided a sample draft consideration to the mayor regarding how potentially a summary might be able to be put forward to this group to help us understand the why behind a particular individual is being recommended for approval, since sometimes just the application itself is not necessarily do a good, good job, or does justice of, like, why this individual. And sometimes we hear it when we're here, but it's not in kind of the physical record. So, a poorly done draft was provided for hopefully a little bit more discussion upcoming.
Brian, are you referring to the enclosure?
So, the enclosure that's here is the, what's been typical, which is the word of the individual's applicant. What happens, though, is if it's a reappointment, their application might not be as relevant.
Oh, yeah.
And sometimes their application is not necessarily as significantly, this one is clear. There are others that are not necessarily as clear for this body that's being asked to approve an appointment.
Got it. Thanks for the reminders. So we have an appointment of Ashley Grease to the Sustainability Committee. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the appointment.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Anything else? Motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.